You ready?
I call the April 1st, 2019, a regular meeting of Belvidere City Council to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Borowitz.
Here.
Alderman Brooks will be absent. Crawford.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Ratcliffe.
Here.
Sanderson. Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Nine present.
We stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father. The world sometimes becomes a unsure and frightening place. Lately, we have seen the untimely deaths of three of our law enforcement heroes. Deputy Jacob Keltner, age thirty-five, leaves a wife and children. Trooper Brooke Jones Story, age thirty-four, leaves a family and children. Trooper Gerald Bliss, thirty-six, leaves a family and children. It doesn't seem right that these young people who put their lives on the line every day for us have left us all too soon. I'd ask for a moment of silence as we contemplate the heroism of these fine officers. Thank you. I would also like you to keep in your hearts and minds, Alderman Brooks is not here tonight because his brother is gravely ill and he is in Peoria. Amen. We have no one registered for public comment this evening, so we'll move right into approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of March eighteenth, 2019, as presented, may I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented. Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed, nay.
Borowitz.
Abstain.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Minutes are approved. Next up, we have a reading of the annual budget hearing notice. City of Belvidere, Illinois, notice of public hearing annual budget ordinance. Public hearing begins at seven oh four. Notice is hereby given that the corporate authority of the City of Belvidere, Illinois will hold a public hearing at seven PM, Monday, April first, 2019, on ordinance four four six H, the proposed annual budget ordinance for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Public hearing shall take place in the city council chambers, 401 Whitney Boulevard, Belvidere, Illinois. Copies of the proposed annual budget ordinance are accessible for the examination by the public during business hours at the office of the Belvidere City Clerk, 401 Whitney Boulevard, Belvidere, Illinois. City of Belvidere, Illinois, Sean Arco, City Clerk, this was published in the Boone County Journal, March twenty-second, 2019. Anybody have comments during the public hearing? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing at seven oh four and a half. Thank you. Under special messages and proclamations, this evening, we have the completion of our probationary period of police officer George Obantse Jr. Chief, are you coming up? Who's going to? Oh, Deputy Chief.
Mr. Mayor, if I could have Deputy Chief Gardner and Wallace step up with Officer Obantse to the podium over there. Before they begin, I'd just like to recognize all of the officers, both on and off duty, that came here tonight in support of Officer Obantse. Thanks, guys.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for having us available to present this tonight. Mr. Mayor, thank you. It's our privilege to present to you Officer George Obantse. Officer George Obantse was sworn in with Belvidere Police Department, March twenty-ninth of two thousand nineteen. After he was sworn in, he attended the CLEA Academy, that's the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy, where he endured fourteen weeks of training, learning criminal law and various other aspects of law enforcement. After completing that, in that process, Officer Obantse also received the distinguished, most distinguished recruit award, the George Graves Award, from the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy, which is the highest award that a recruit could obtain and receive from their peers while at the academy. And that just goes to show you the level of character that, of people that we're looking for to work in this organization for the city. From there, Officer Obantse went to our FTO program, our field training program, for four months, where he endured a lot of on-the-job training from numerous field training officers and led by Sergeant David Damon, that's here tonight. And from there, after he completed that training, he was released to solo patrol. Since Officer Obantse has been on solo patrol, he's really proven himself to be a huge asset to the Belvidere, to the Belvidere Police Department and the City of Belvidere. He really has gone out there consistently, been addressing the issues that we present to him, as well as consistently when things are not, when he's not responding to calls, he's out there creating his own self-initiated field activity to ensure that the reputation of the City of Belvidere is maintained. And we just congratulate him after he's completed his probationary period effective today, and we're just glad that he is here tonight, and we'd like to present to him with his official Belvidere Police Department badges. For the first year, they have a temporary badge assigned to them, and then after one year, they get their official badge with their badge number on it, badge number four fifteen, Officer George Obantse.
Good afternoon. Feels like just yesterday, I was here getting sworn in and preparing to start the academy. My first year as a police officer was definitely a roller coaster of emotions and challenges, but I am glad I was able to overcome all the tasks necessary to be here today. I couldn't have done it, this without the support of everyone involved in my training as I developed as a police officer. So I want to thank, first of all, my family who's here, especially my fiancee, who just has been, you know, a rock throughout this journey. I also want to thank all the officers of the Belvidere Police Department, starting with all the officers in patrol. We're all here, so thank you for coming, all the way up to Chief Woody, for providing their support and guidance. I want to especially thank the FTOs that provided the training necessary to do the job, Officer Schutz, King McDermott, who's here, and Officer Barillo. And lastly, I want to thank the city and community of Belvidere for allowing me to achieve the goal of a lifetime, which is becoming a police officer. So I'll thank you all for being here, and I'm looking forward to the many years to come as a Belvidere police officer. Thank you.
We are indeed fortunate that we have the ability to recruit such extraordinary young men to become part of our public safety family. Under number seven, approval of expenditures this evening, we have none. Under number eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers, please note that items A and B have been received and placed on file, which brings us to item C, minutes of the committee of the whole, public safety and finance and personnel of March twenty-fifth, 2019, may I have a motion to approve these minutes? Motion by Alderman Sanderson, second by Alderman Borowitz. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed, nay.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Borowitz.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Minutes are approved unanimously, thank you. Under number nine, unfinished business, we have, under A, ordinance four forty-three H, a second reading on ordinance amending section one fourteen dash four oh four B of the Belvidere Municipal Code to modify sewer rates. This will remain on the table as the research and work is still being done to look into doing that. Which then brings us to item A. Ordinance four forty-six H, a second reading on ordinance budgeting for all corporate purposes for the City of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May first, 2019, and ending April thirtieth, thirty twenty. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Ratcliffe. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion, now on the floor. Alderman Freeman.
Okay, so I was going back over fiscal year nineteen's budget, and Becky, is there a reason why we keep six million in the reserve when we only require four point two million?
It is three to six months of reserves is what we're required to keep. So, our average monthly bills are one point four million. So at six million, that's a little over, that's a little less than four and a half months.
Okay, 'cause, you know, when I was looking at this, I was, you know, the taxpayers voted for a utility tax for the purpose of infrastructure, yet according to the recap of the general fund budget for fiscal year nineteen, the actual amount collected in twenty eighteen was one million, nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, forty-nine dollars, and was deposited into the general fund, right? So then, forty thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars, under new initiatives, was approved for a wage increase for an administrative assistant, and a community development, part-time inspector to full-time, increase for electrical inspector, and a wage increase for an administration assistant. The fire department deputy chief was voted down, so that leaves, according to you, remaining reserve balance, six million, six hundred and three dollars, seven hundred and fifty-seven. Amount available for road projects or new initiatives, six hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars, of which we use forty thousand, six hundred and thirty, so that leaves five hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven for road projects. Did you get that, Brent?
I can answer. That was voted, you all at last year's budget, voted to not use that and budget any road projects, so that was left in the general fund for future road projects. So last year at this time, that was brought up, that I recommended not to fall under the six million. So that would have left six point six, so at that time, you could have decided to approve up to, you know, almost six hundred thousand in road projects at that time, nobody did, because we weren't quite sure what was going to happen with our revenues at that point. At that time, we did not have the sales tax increase, we did not have the motor fuel tax increase, we didn't have any of those things. So at that point, and even, I believe our public works director, I don't want to speak for him, but it was decided to just leave that in there at that time for future road projects.
Correct. With that dollar amount, you would not have been able to complete any of the major infrastructure improvements. You would have been able to do some additional overlays, street overlays, but that's about all at that point in time. So it was felt it was better to hang on to that money, let it build up, to be able to do the bigger projects that we have coming before us now.
Okay, well, we have a, we have an alley in my ward. It runs between Caswell and Warren, all the way from Sixth Street to Second, and overlay's not going to cut it. That whole alley that people depend on to get to their garages is in really, 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 really bad shape.
We could certainly take a look at that. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, Alderman Stevens.
Yes, I would like to go over the assistant fire chief thing, because I'd like to make a motion to cut out anything to do with the assistant fire chief out of the budget and the new firefighter out of this coming up budget, cut all that out of it.
We have a motion to make an amendment to the budget as presented, to remove the hiring of a firefighter, which part of would be paid for in this coming budget year, and the addition of an assistant fire chief in our next budget year. So it's not remained to this budget, really?
Mr. Mayor, there's nothing in the budget for deputy chiefs, so I imagine what the motion is, to remove the firefighter from this year's budget.
And that would be the extent of what is in this year's budget? Is that your amendment?
Yeah, because I didn't know if there's anything in the budget with the assistant chief, so I was just adding that in.
There is not. So we have a motion to remove the, part of the firefighter salary from this year's budget. Is there a second? Motion is second. Additional questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Freeman.
So this has nothing to do with the assistant fire chief, it's simply adding an additional firefighter?
Would you want to comment on the process that we've discussed several times?
Well, and if the chief wants to step in, what was budgeted for next year, for fiscal year twenty, is just twenty thousand dollars, because what wouldn't, the first step is to hire a new firefighter, and that was anticipated to happen in February. So we budgeted three months of salary, fringe benefits, those types of things, because that would need to happen first.
So are we not still a firefighter down the well?
By eventually getting to the assistant chief position, it was, I wanted to get a firefighter, and then start all the process of raising people to the next level. Firefighter to lieutenant, lieutenant to captain, and then one of the captains to the assistant chief.
But you're at full staff right now, besides the assistant?
I'm at what's allowed to me, yes.
Alderman Snow.
And I had discussions with Chief Heiser, and this is a, it's a tough decision, because there's a lot of expense involved, not only just the direct line salary, there's all the benefits, the extra vehicle that they'll need to drive in the future, the long-term retirement issues and things like that, that we do encumber the citizens in the future with doing so. But at this point, I think it's warranted to go ahead and do the chief and start the process, but that being said, but when that comes full board, Al's hand's going to be held to the fire to have, be able to show some real progress in initiatives that have been able to achieve, and hopefully maybe secure grants and be able to be more proactive in trying to secure monies from other people to offset the cost to our fire department.
Alderman Freeman.
So if we add this firefighter, Al, and in the end, your deputy chief doesn't pass the council, then what happens, do we have too many firefighters? Is he going to help alleviate some of the overtime that you guys have, or is that going to?
No, to, actually, from two thousand eight, we're still down two firefighters. We used to have, we've had, since that time, we've, we've had a couple people, actually one left and went to the suburbs. We haven't hired back, we were at a strength of ten at one time per shift, and right now we're at nines, so, all right.
Alderman Sanderson.
So a follow-up on Alderman Freeman's question, so if you're down two firefighters, they could just be rehired without the council's approval, it doesn't need to have this approval to hire another firefighter, that's really to set up to have an assistant fire chief, deputy chief, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, we're just getting.
That's not correct.
That's not correct.
I didn't understand the question.
If he's not budgeted, he can't hire it.
Correct, and that's what I was going to say, if, the next, I was going to try and pull up our timeline. What would happen if this is put in the budget, your first step will be a resolution, that'll be brought before you sometime this summer, probably June, July, creating the assistant chief position. If that passes, then that would kind of give him, that would give him the authority to go ahead and start the hiring process. If that fails, he will not be hiring anybody, and that twenty thousand dollars would sit in the budget and remain in the budget and not be spent.
Well, what I was stating is, if, if the fire department has two people leave, they can replace those two people because they're already budgeted for. So, that's, that's, so we don't have to hire another firefighter to replace the two that are missing, is what I'm saying.
To replace the two that left several years ago, you'd have to budget for them, they're not in the proposed budget. That's contrary to the situation where in the middle of a budget year, where you've got, let's say, thirty guys budgeted for, right? One leaves, yes, they'll go out and refill that position because it's already a budgeted item. But during the recession, we diminished the size of all our departments. Public Works is still down several guys, Administration is down several, Fire Department's down several, and we reduced our budget along the same time, along the same way. So he cannot go out and replace these gentlemen right now without changing the budget.
So why didn't we just put that in the budget if we needed that, then? We would have considered that, I guess, you know, with that conversation.
Well, I'm going to take a wild stab at it, since we've been talking about this for sixteen, seventeen years. We've been talking about an assistant chief for sixteen years, as long as I can remember. And when the, I thought we were getting close when the downturn came, but everybody cut back, way back, so that we could afford to make, meet payroll, keep the doors of City Hall open. Since Al has become the chief, he has changed the way that the department operates. Captains take an active role in running their shifts, lieutenants take an active role in the training on each of the shifts, and he, Al, takes the major part of doing the administrative work with his assistant. We are one of, I don't really know another full-time fire department, professional fire department that operates this way, because it's inefficient, and it causes a lot of extra labor for Al to try to even keep up with the paperwork flow and doing all the other things he does. Please remember that our fire department is one of the highest, most highly respected professional fire departments in the region. We're the water team, we're the extrication team, we're the hazmat team, you know, our fire department gets called to back up the other fire departments when specialty things need to be done. I think that this has been more than a reasonable request, it is not an extraordinary amount of money, it has been crafted very carefully in the budget so that there would be a smooth transition. So, you know, if you look at the structure of our other public safety brotherhood, which is the police department, we have a chief and two deputy chiefs. In the paperwork that was distributed to all of you to look at, it showed how other fire departments are built. As I said, we're the only one that doesn't have something like this, that is a department of our size and a department of our complexity. So I really still have a hard time getting my hands around why we don't want to have an assistant chief. We have a balanced budget, including that, planning for bringing the officer on, we will have a balanced budget next year if we bring that officer on. It's no, and there's no magic here. This year's budget is a balanced budget with a small surplus. Our job is to take the taxpayers' money that they entrust us and spend it on the taxpayers, not sit on it, not build up some imaginary fund, that's not what we do. We could have up to six months or more in our reserve fund, we're required to have three to six months in our reserve fund. In thirteen and fourteen, we saved up a lot of money so we could complete capital projects, which is what we do, because we don't want to take a bond out and indebted the citizens of the City of Belvidere to a long-term payment with a lot of interest added on to do the projects that we need to do. So we save our money and we pay for the project from the get-go. So, you know, this is another well-thought-out plan. Yes, Alderman Freeman.
So for the purposes of this budget that we're talking about tonight, this is only hiring a new firefighter, that we need anyway, that we are down anyway.
Becky.
It's hiring three months' worth of a new firefighter, if the assistant chief position, if that resolution passes later on in the summer.
Becky, is it fair to say that the intention is if that deputy chief position is not created, you would not fill the firefighter vacancy at this point?
Correct.
Chief Heiser, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I do, thanks, Mayor. This is just, you know, this is the legwork that I have to do to get ready for a position like this, which is, I feel is much needed, it's been needed for a long time, contrary to some people's beliefs. This is, this is a position that, you know, I could just go out on a limb and say every fire department in this area, in the local region, has assistant chiefs. It knows, you have to have, at some point, you have to have a successor to the chief. You have to have somebody who can stop in for when he's not around, you have to have that layer. I've gone, I've talked about this numerous times, but I don't have that, inside that layer from me to my captains. I might see, for instance, one of my captains was gone for three shifts, so I didn't, basically, I didn't see him for, like, almost two weeks. So it's, it just is not efficient, so I'm asking again, this is a, I don't know, like Mayor said, this is by sixteen, seventeen years now, we're asking for this position, so, thank you for your consideration.
Additional comments? Alderman Stevens?
I have no problem with hiring firefighters, I have a problem with hiring an additional officer in the staff. I'd love to hire more firefighters, public works people and patrol officers, they're the people that actually do the work. We don't need anyone to do paperwork. To me, this is a glorified secretarial position.
What is?
The assistant chief. It's a pretty well a glorified secretarial position.
Do you have a?
A lot of the positions, the other departments have assistant chiefs, yes, but they're given specific duties like EMS and other things, since I, I mean, I've heard this, well, you've been gone a long time, things have changed. It hasn't changed that much since I've been there. In the twenty-five years I was there, almost there, didn't need it then, didn't need it now. We need firefighters on the ground to go into the building to fight the fires, we need the patrol officers to go out and do the streets, and we need the public works guys to go out and dig the holes, plow the snow and all that. We don't need administration.
Chief, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, yeah, to Alderman Stevens. Yeah, it's nice to have more firefighters, yep, that's true. This guy's getting a guy, over the course of the day, when we're busiest, to bring another person out there for us to run calls as well. He's, this person's going to be a param, he is a paramedic, he'll be able to respond to EMS calls. So to me, we have back-to-back-to-back calls, and I was the third person, not to mention myself, so we were able to get out to a four, four separate apparatus going to different calls, so. Also, for major incidents, this person also could give me my safety officer that I need right away, to have, make sure every firefighter on the fire ground is safe. This guy gives me another person that we can utilize for, like, the backside of the building, which you should probably remember, the seaside, which we don't have enough people to do that kind of stuff when we're having incidents. This is, this is another safety layer as well. I don't want to overlap and serve, but I'm good on what I need here, so.
That's what we have captains and lieutenants for, that's what we did back then. I don't care who's been promised this position and why, I like all the guys down at the fire department, I just have heard enough from people, we don't need to make a hundred thousand dollar position with all the cars and all that, we don't need it. No matter how you want to talk about safety, we have six officers. And the whole thing about not being able to get ahold of them, this is twenty nineteen, not nineteen nineteen, there are cell phones that you can call from. I don't know of anyone in the department that doesn't have it, they also have the paging know of anyone in the department that doesn't have it. They also have the paging software on their phones so that when someone goes out, they should know about it.
Alderman Crawford?
Yeah, we're all supposed to be stewards of the taxpayers' money. And I've been sitting on the council 14 years, and I listen a lot to see what different people say. And I trust every one of these department heads to do the right thing because they know the job. What I watch in this council is there's a lot of people here that just want to micromanage every department head here, and that's all they want to do. If it's something good for the city, the department says it is, he knows, they want to micromanage it and stop it. And I've watched it for 14 years.
Alderman Snow.
And Becky, can you let me know, where are we with the cost of the new, smaller fire truck in this budget?
The mini pumper is budgeted. If you recall, a portion of it is budgeted, 125,000 of it, coming out, not coming out of the general fund, it's coming out of the capital fund, being paid for with impact fee money. So, that is the first payment. The remaining balance, there is still some money left in impact fee. That'll be up to you whether to use it. Otherwise, that'll have to come out of the general fund next year.
And, and your honor, I guess-
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Your honor, I wasn't, I wasn't done yet. So, the, the concern is that you've got 100-plus thousand dollars, maybe not this year, but then you throw in the cost of the fire truck, regardless of where it's coming out of, and you, we have a lot of other issues, particularly if you talk to the people on the south side of the city where they've got the flooding and stuff. And their concerns are not whether or not the fire chief has a, a new fire truck or a, an assistant, you know. So, I don't think the prospects of the dollar amounts in that are totally not worthy of discussion, because we do have other things that that money could go toward to help alleviate issues that we as a city are kind of responsible for. So, I don't negate the comments of this is a lot of money and an issue, and just because we have a balanced budget doesn't mean that that's where it should go. Just tossing that out there.
It's not $42 million. And there is a plan in place now to directly address how we are going to do those things on the south side of the city, okay? As long as we are continuing to encounter the issues that we have with more rain in shorter periods of time, we have a, a step-by-step-by-step plan which has been presented to the council over the next couple of years of the steps that we're doing to alleviate that. No dollar is too large or too small an amount to discuss. But to follow what I heard Alderman Crawford say, at a point in time, we need to take a good, hard look at, at the city of Belvidere and how well it operates, and how skilled and professional our department heads are, and how they are respected by the other people in this business. And then we need to take a look at how much we pay our people as compared to what other people in other cities our size get paid. And, you know, for us to be competitive and to continue to have the level of professionalism that we have, we need to be competitive in all aspects of how we run the city. And so, that's what all we're trying to do. We have had our, our firefighters stand by us when times were tough. We had our police officers stand by us when times were tough and take zero raises or 1% raises, do without a lot of things. So, we have budgeted to put aside the money and crafted financial strategies to put the money aside to meet the, the demands that we have for new and better equipment, for an expanded group of employees. And please remember something, our deputy fire chief is somebody that, the person who is in mind for this at this time will live in Belvidere and will pay taxes in the city of Belvidere, just like all the rest of us. We would love to have our entire fire department to be all people from Belvidere. That would be wonderful. Creating a job at the city level is not a bad thing, it's a good thing. Yes, Alderman Frank.
According to Becky, she said that we're gonna be given a resolution in June or July to create the position. Can we create the position and then try to fund it? Or does it have to be, we approve this first? I mean, is there, does it have to be, I know it has to be done by May 1st, right? But we can't just do the resolution?
Two different, two different issues. What, this is, what's being discussed tonight is solely the position of a firefighter. You don't need to take any further action other than tonight to fund the two or three months' worth of firefighter salary next spring to do that. The deputy chief position or assistant chief position, I forget which one the fart wants to call it, requires an ordinance to create that position. That'll be presented to you probably after May 1, but I don't know when they're planning to bring that forward.
Additional questions or comments? Alderman Porter?
Well, I've, I've been told by a couple of people that you can go from, right from captain to be a chief as long as you test. And I think we're all in agreement, everybody that I've talked to is in agreement of the person that they have in mind for doing this would be the perfect person. But my understanding is that you could actually go from captain right to chief if that arose.
Yeah, you can, you can go from captain, you can go from lieutenant to chief.
You can go from firefighter to chief.
Yeah, that's all. If you're able to do that.
Chief is an appointed position in the city of Belvidere. Alderman Freeman?
I think we should, in this budget now, at the very least, not do the $20,000 for a three-month, maybe, thing, but actually fund a full-time firefighter right now and then revisit the deputy chief when the time comes for that.
Are you making an amendment? Let's vote on the one that we have on the floor right now first. I think we need to take them one at a time. So, we had a motion to amend to eliminate the part-time, or the partial installation of a firefighter, three months' worth of pay at the end of the year. And we had a second. We've had a lot of discussion about subjects that relate to that, but that was basically the motion, the second. All those in favor of making that amendment to this year's budget, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Frank? I still have a question first. Can I ask this question first?
Sure.
I want to know, like what Marcia said, if, or I talked to Becky, if we vote for the $20,000 for a firefighter, but if it doesn't go through for the fire chief, then this is null and void too, right?
It would not be included in this budget, yes.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
Okay, so my vote would be, I, I want a firefighter. So, yes, I would see-
That can be brought up.
We, we need to vote on the, the motion-
Just my amendment.
-that are on the floor.
Just my amendment to get rid of the-
Right now, it's to remove the firefighter's salary of $20,000 from this year's fire department budget.
And then we can come back with another budget if you want to.
This is to remove the firefighter's salary of $20,000 from the fire department's budget.
Well, we will do it the way we do it when we call your name. You say aye or nay.
Frank?
Nay.
Freeman?
Nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Nay.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Nay.
Stevens?
Aye.
Borowitz?
Aye.
Crawford?
Nay.
Four in favor.
Well, do I break for time?
Four to five.
Okay. Motion is lost. Okay, thank you. So, back to the original motion, which is the second reading of the budget. We had a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Wait, can you repeat that?
Okay. Ordinance 446H, second reading. An ordinance budgeting for all corporate purposes for the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2019, ending April 30th, 2020. I ask for questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the budget. Alderman Stevens made a proposal. He made an amendment. There was a second. We had discussion and we voted on it, and it was voted down. So, we are back to voting on the budget as an entity, as presented, for the second reading, so we will have a budget for next year. Are there additional questions, comments? Alderman Freeman?
I would like to make the amendment to fund a full-time firefighter for this year.
I'd second that one.
Well, part of it, we'll have to determine when that firefighter would be hired, because a full-time firefighter plus fringe benefits is still over 80,000. So, we would, that would not give you a balanced budget if you were to hire May 1. So, there would have to be a time determined halfway through the year or something so that we would still have a balanced budget.
So, the motion not to hire the $20,000 unit was voted down. So, if we vote up to add a firefighter, we've already voted to leave the 20,000 in the budget. So, that's the start of a firefighter's salary. So, if you vote up adding another firefighter, you're adding a firefighter and a third this year, which is not in our balanced budget.
Unless you're talking about hiring them in February like we already have budgeted, then it would be that same 20,000.
So, come May, when the council votes down the assistant chief, we don't get a firefighter at all?
Unless you make a dis, unless you were to vote to use that 20,000 for another firefighter, you can always do that, because it's in the budget. You're not using money that isn't already in the budget.
So, what do you want to do? Withdraw the motion?
I'll withdraw that motion.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments concerning the budget for 2019, 2020? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Borowitz?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Eight in favor.
Budget for 2019, 2020 is approved. Moving on. Under B, we have ordinance 447H, a second reading. It's an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment, a bar with video gaming, within the Pub Plan Business District at 982 Belvidere Road. May have a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Frank, second by Alderman Snow. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Alderman Snow.
So, as I recall, there wasn't any public comment about that particular issue?
Not at this particular property.
Additional questions or comments? Is this, yes, you want, Alderman Stevens? Okay.
How many gaming licenses or special uses do we have still out there, ready to fill up?
So, the council capped it at 30. There's currently 26 licenses issued, leaving four left. There's more than four special uses floating around out there. So, at this point, it's like a first-come, first-served basis. There's a couple of special uses that were approved, and I honestly don't know if they're ever going to open. We had a couple applicants at a site, not Russ, but they're having some difficulties, and I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if they're gonna really follow through with it or not, so that frees them up. But anyone that has come in to apply, I've been very honest. It's a special use, you can operate a bar, a pool hall, stuff like that, but you're not guaranteed a video gaming license at this point. Mr. Crombie understands that. I will say, after his certified notices went out, it hit a couple of gas stations on Logan Avenue and Belvidere Road, and they called, and they're like, we thought it was, you know, capped out already. I said, well, it's, he's taking his chances. And they're like, well, we'll take our chances too. So, we may actually end up getting a few more. And I've been very clear with Alderman, there is no guarantee.
And you will remember, there's a caveat to the ordinance, that if we hit 30 and someone comes before the council and begs or asks for us to add another one, we can consider that, and it'll be up to the council to grant or not grant. So, yes, Alderman Snow.
Just for discussion purposes, if we're talking about the licenses and that, so in the overall scheme of getting a video gaming license, do they have to have the liquor license in place or be able to get the liquor license?
It depends. Depends on the nature of the establishment. If it's a fraternal organization of some kinds, there's a select few types that do not need a liquor license, but the vast majority do require a liquor license first.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Nay.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Borowitz?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Motion 447H is approved unanimously. Which brings us to item C, ordinance 448H, a second reading. It's an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment and event center within the neighborhood office district at 1550 Pearl Street. May have a motion to approve. That's what Alderman Snow may have a second, Alderman Borowitz. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Alderman Snow.
So, could you give us a quick snapshot of what some of the public comments were and concerns?
There were public comments at this one. Surprisingly, not as many as the, the next one on the agenda. And the public comments ranged from, "Event center is okay, as long as it's not a full-blown bar," to, "I don't want anything by me," to, "As long as you have the fence and stuff up, then we're okay with it." Overall, it was, I would say, a positive, open discussion. The neighbors were, received it better than the previous special use on the property, because although it's the same special use of indoor commercial entertainment, there is a condition on there that they can only serve alcohol while there's a private event going on. So, it can't be, you know, your 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM bar-type setting. It's if, you know, you're having a reception and you want to open up the bar. So, Attorney Drell helped me craft the language on that, so we could tidy it up as much as possible. And that seemed to really ease the mind of a lot of the neighbors.
Yes, Alderman Snow, you're still on the floor.
And does this still, does this take up the whole building and the whole property, or will-
It will take up the whole building. I believe the basement is still in, yeah, the basement's still unfinished. They're just gonna be focusing on the main floor, but it will take up the whole main floor level. And then they will be, if you noticed, that, I don't want to call it an ADA ramp, because there's no way that meant any kind of code. That's gone. The overgrown landscaping's gone. They have every intention to repairing the parking lot and restriping it. So, the entire property will be getting a makeover, but the special uses for the inside.
Thank you. That was gonna be my next question, a facelift, which obviously helps a big amount for the neighborhood effect, if nothing else. Thank you.
Alderman Freeman?
I think this is a great thing for Belvidere. First of all, that, that old DMV building needs a huge makeover. Second of all, I just recently had a new grandchild, and I searched everywhere high and low for a place to have a baby shower. My option in Belvidere was River's Edge or Rockford. This would've been great to have as an option. I think it's gonna be a huge asset for our city.
Okay. Anyone else have a comment concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Borowitz?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Motion 448H is approved unanimously, which brings us to item D, ordinance 449H, a second reading. An ordinance granting a special use to allow outdoor commercial entertainment, a beer garden, within the Central Business District at 622 South State. May have a motion to approve. I'll make that motion. Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Frank. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. concerning the motion now on the floor. Alderman Frank.
I just had a question. One of the neighbor has voiced a complaint, as you know, about how loud it would be if there was a beer garden and maybe possible outdoor entertainment, like a band. Do you know how often they would want to have a band play?
So, at the public hearing, although they're not conditioned to it, they said that it would probably only be about once a month. It would be the larger activities. Regular eating and drinking outside is permitted. That's outdoor seating, that's permitted till 10 o'clock. So, the special use is really for that extra stuff if they did some kind of fundraiser or had a band, stuff like that. And they're thinking it won't be more than once a month, but it's not conditioned to that. And there is a noise ordinance. We talked in pretty long detail about that at the public hearing. There is a noise ordinance. So, if the neighbors feel like it is getting too loud, they can call the police, and the noise ordinance can be enacted.
Thank you, Gina.
Alderman Sanderson, thank you, Alderman Frank. Alderman Sanderson.
Thanks, Your Honor. So, I'm just wondering, if there was something over 10 o'clock at night, it would seem to make more sense to maybe have it on a week when people aren't going to work the next day and stuff, so there's less complaints? Would that be a condition that would be okay for you guys? Or are you planning on having stuff after 10 o'clock on Wednesday night?
I don't think we are planning to have it by 10 o'clock. I mean, I think everything would end by 10 o'clock. You know, if the conditions continue on, we're going to have to stop. We don't want that kind of.
So, you said that, I see 10 o'clock on here. So, cease by 10 o'clock. So, we would have to stop the ban at 10 o'clock any time? Or, I'm just a little confused on.
Yeah, that, that condition was enacted by the plan commission as a compromise between the applicant and the surrounding neighbors that were upset by it, since, like I said, outdoor eating and drinking is permitted till 10. The special use was for the other activities, such as bands, maybe a bags tournament, pig roast, stuff like that. The plan commission had asked them if they were okay with all activities, even the ones permitted by the special use ending at 10, as a compromise. And the applicant was agreeable to that at the plan commission, and that's where that condition came from.
So, that condition is for all time?
Yeah, that condition's for Sunday through Saturday for all activities.
Okay. Yeah, because I, you know, I understand sometimes on the weekend, you have to have a little bit more time if you have some, but I just thought, you know, but if they're willing to just keep it at 10 o'clock all the time, that's fine. You guys found a good show over there.
Alderman Snow.
So, at this point, the tentative approval would be to allow the entire parking lot, formerly the city's parking lot, to be used for an event, or they could use part of it for parking and part of it for events as well, correct?
Correct. And that is why, in the past, when we've had establishments ask for this special use, we've made them put up permanent fencing that, you know, like beer bottles and cups couldn't be passed through. This one's a little unique, because it's actually their parking lot. So, we didn't want to require permanent fencing to be put up, because when there's not an activity, there will be, it'll be used for parking, and maybe an activity takes up the whole parking lot or just a part of the parking lot, which is why temporary fence, if they are doing activities, temporary fencing needs to be put up, just so that there is a barricade. It's a lot easier for staff to monitor, you know, with that temporary fencing, but a permanent one's not needed. But, yeah, it could be the whole parking lot. It could be a portion of it, depends on what the activity is.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Borowitz?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Ordinance 449H is approved unanimously. Which brings us to item E. Ordinance 450H, a second reading. An ordinance approving a replat titled Plat III of Town Hall Industrial Park. Motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Ratcliffe. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Alderman Freeman.
Yeah, you know, it's hard to tell from the map where exactly, where exactly is this at? Town Hall, where's Morium Drive?
So, Morium Drive, do you know Northwest Pallet? That's Morium Drive.
Okay.
So, it's one lot, one of the few remaining vacant lots getting split in half for, it's a local company called Fastenal. They're expanding. So, actually, I was talking to the engineer today. He's already making the changes that were recommended, and he's going to email me and Brent a copy of the revised plat, so we can review it to make sure the changes are what we wanted. So, they're already being very active with the comments.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Borowitz?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Ordinance 450H is approved unanimously. Takes us to number 10, new business. Under A, we have Resolution 2094-2019. Resolution authorizing certain annual parades for 2019. May have a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Borowitz. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none, all those in favor will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Stevens?
Aye.
Borowitz?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Resolution 2094-2019 is approved unanimously. Brings us to item B, another resolution. Resolution 2095-2019, a resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code. Brent, you want to explain what that means specifically, please?
This is the annual resolution to authorize expenditure motor fuel tax funds for those items that motor fuel tax pays for, which is our street overlays, our salt that we buy for winter maintenance of the streets, some patch mix, and some pavement striping.
May have a motion to approve. Alderman Snow, second. Alderman Borowitz. Questions, comments? Alderman Snow.
Since Brent brought it up, so how are we doing salt-wise? Or how did we wind up doing this year? Did we wind up using a boatload, or?
We used about what we budget annually for. So, we came in right about where we should be with our order this year with what we had left over from last year.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Borowitz?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman? Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Resolution 2095-2019 is approved unanimously. Which brings us then to motions of public safety. Chairman Crawford will present the motion this evening. Chairman Crawford.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to approve replacing squad number 21 with a 2019 Dodge Charger all-wheel drive at a cost not to exceed $43,500, using money from the DUI equipment fund.
May have a motion to approve.
Came out of committee.
Make that motion.
Questions or comments? Alderman Snow.
And I realize this, if I recall right, this was coming from one of the local dealerships. Whatever happened to the state thing?
The state bid? Yeah, it's all done with state bid from the dealership, through the dealership.
Alderman Stevens, did you have a comment? Alderman Freeman.
So, Becky, this goes, we budget about $20,000 a year for this. It's actually not a DUI fine. It's actually a tax, a fee is a tax. A fine is administered by a court. Anyway, about 20 grand goes into our budget per year. How is it that we built up 150-plus thousand dollars? And is that just all somewhere sitting in the general fund, or what?
Yeah, I intend this one. Yeah, it is, it is a fine that is administered through the courts set by statute. So, anybody that is arrested for DUI, either misdemeanor or felony, a fine is imposed, and they have to pay that fine. That fine is then forwarded to the police department in the city, which goes back into the general fund under a different line item.
But, there are only certain things that this money can be spent on, which is why it's built up. So, and you could, I'm sure you could rattle off the list of things that it could be spent on, but, and we keep track of that, and we keep track of all those dollars. There's multiple different fines that are collected, and we have to keep track of all those separately.
I, I know what it can be spent on, but I just didn't see a line item in the budget that depicted 152,000 or whatever it is, like, that said, that's what this is.
Yeah, it goes into their, it's their police miscellaneous that's in their revenue line item. That's where it goes into each year, along with some of the others.